Welcome to the meeting of the Land Use Commission for the Coastal and Russian River MAC committees. I'm going to start with a roll call. And first up is Kyra Link. Mike Nichols.
Here.
Scott Farmer.
Here.
Beth Brizoni.
Here.
And Brian Lubitz.
Is he in the gallery, maybe?
Hold on. Nope.
Chez Pessoul. And Pip Marquez de la Plata.
There's Brian.
There's Brian. Say Brian, Brian, nice to you.
He's in the weeds.
Welcome to our new clerk, Mary. This is her first meeting as clerk. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you, Mary.
Brian, you're muted.
So shall we move forward? I'm Kyra Link, if anybody doesn't know who I am. And I was asked and accepted to chair this, the Land Use Committee for the Lower Russian River MAC. And I was asked to chair this meeting today, the special meeting that we're going to be having and going forth with. I think we need to go through the pledge of allegiance first.
Okay, I'd love to lead that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have a special meeting. This meeting is being called a special meeting ahead of the Board of Supervisors meeting that's going to meet at the end of this month. And the reason why this meeting was called together for a special meeting was to give Council MAC feedback as well as public opinion feedback and suggestions to Lynda Hopkins to bring forward to the Board of Supervisors in their meeting with Permit Sonoma at the end of this month to talk about land use permits and specifically the special event permits. So the agenda is a one item agenda. It's to talk about the permit process. I'd like to ask if there's any comments to this topic and or and or agenda.
I, I do. Yeah, I focus on the events aspect. I have a list of things, but I could bring them up as they come up in the meeting, or I can just dive in. Would you like me just to dive in?
Yeah, I think beyond, is this specific for events or outside of events?
Events.
Scott, she asked for comments on the agenda. We haven't approved the agenda yet.
You're ahead of yourself.
I'm ahead of myself. No comment.
Any comments on the agenda from the committee members?
Move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
And now do I ask for public comment to the agenda?
We vote.
Do we have any public comment?
Do we need to vote on that motion?
Do we vote after public comment or before?
We vote after public comment.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Okay.
There are no hands raised or public comment.
With that, I call.
Now C has raised her hand. C, do you have comment on the agenda?
Um, yes.
Please go ahead.
I have a comment on something that was written on the agenda item, which was the premise that events and permitting events are ministerial in nature.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you. This is not, this is only the approval of the agenda.
But that is written on the agenda, and that is what was shared with the public, and I have issue with that. I have other comments later, but I think it's important that that be addressed.
Well, the question is before us is whether or not we're going to talk about the agenda. So your, your comment is, is further down the road. Question is, do we, do we take this off the, so, so thank you. Just give us a minute, please. Kyra, if you could please go forward with the vote on the agenda.
Yes, I would like to call for a vote. Mary, do you want to ask the council members?
Okay. Do a roll call vote of council members. Let's start with Kyra.
Yes.
Mike Nichols.
Yes.
Brian Lubitz.
Yes.
Did Che come in yet? Nope.
No.
No. Scott Farmer.
Hi.
Beth Brizoni.
Hi.
Very good.
The agenda is approved. So with the agenda being approved, I want to just for anybody who might be on the phone or had not seen the information that was distributed. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
We gave three, there was three points that went out. One talked about this is a special meeting of the Land Use Committee for the Sonoma Coast and Russian River MAC. We are an advisory council of Supervisor Hopkins. All authority for permits still reside with the agency overseeing that particular permit, in this case, Permit Sonoma. The MAC's role is to provide an additional local source for information and input so that residents can better be informed and more engaged in this process. This meeting is not to make any binding decisions on land use policy. It is to inform the community on the process and to gather ideas and suggestions that will be provided to the Events Permit Team and Supervisor Hopkins in preparation for a workshop with Permit Sonoma on updating the Events Permit Process. At this time, the workshop is scheduled for August 31st at the Board of Supervisors meeting. Number two, it talks about event permits, and I think this is where we have a comment coming in. Are ministerial in nature, meaning that any application that meets the guidelines in the application are automatically granted. This leaves little room for input on events that may have a significant community impact. While it is highly unlikely that the Board of Supervisors will change the ministerial, yeah, nature of this event permit process, there is an opportunity through the Land Use Committee meeting, participation in the Board of Supervisors meeting, or comments directly to Permit Sonoma to suggest guidelines to be added to the application that can help reduce the risk to health and the safety of these events in our communities. And number three, current event encroachment permits for events affecting roads is attached for reference. Zoning permit information is available at a link at Permit Sonoma. So with that, I'm going to open it up for comments from the committee members.
Do we need to do conflict of interest?
Oh, yes. Thank you so much. I'd like to ask if there's any conflicts of interest that should be announced. Without comment, I say there is none.
Okay.
All right. I think we're okay to move forward with comments from the council on our agenda. And the purpose for our meeting.
I have, I can start. There, there seems to be a division between, well, for the coast, for example. I think our interest is in when, when the public is impacted significantly. And I think that suggests that it's really when our highways are impacted, because that's how we get in and out, and there's only that to get in and out with. And Caltrans has jurisdiction over that, and the county really rubber stamps that process. When there's a permit, an event permit that only involves county roads, then that stays within the county. So I, I'd like to, I have some comments about the form, the county form itself, and then I'd like to also talk about Caltrans and how the county interacts with that responsibility. I'll leave it at that. If maybe we can take that up as we move forward, or I can just go down my list. Back to you.
I don't know. I mean, I'm okay with you going through your list, and then we can go to each council member and
Okay.
add, add to that or subtract from it.
So in, not in a hierarchical order, but the Permit Sonoma application form, I thought could use some adjustments. They changed the mailing address to include physical address. With the Caltrans application, only 501(c)(3)'s and government agencies in the county and cities and, and 501(c)(3)'s that have offices within the county are eligible to apply for these permits. And so having a physical address in the county, I think should be there. And also, the county permit form should perhaps indicate whether it's 501(c)(3) or not. And, and therefore indicate on the application, the county application, that a Caltrans encro- encroachment permit is required or not. In other words, are, are highways being used or just county? And if so, list the state routes or highways that are involved specifically. And also another portion of this county application form requires certain notifications. Fire services and local fire districts, the notification goes to a central county office. And my experience is that the notification to the local agency sometimes is not as timely as would be desired. If that could be made better. So moving on to the Caltrans aspect more, again, restating that I think, at least from the coast point of view, our, our concern is, is really with events that impact the public significantly. And that really, I think mostly speaks to highways. Be interested in comments from the other council members and the community on that. And that is Caltrans jurisdiction. Let me just read one passage that Caltrans has that really speaks to some of what I think C is concerned about as well. Quote, "Caltrans has the responsibility and obligation to evaluate and determine if a special event may be safely conducted with as little burden to the traveling public. Special events are allowed under encroachment permit issued by Caltrans. It is not a right or obligation for your event to take place on state highways. If your event crosses, travels on, or affects state highways, then you are required to apply for and obtain an encroachment permit before your event takes place. Caltrans authority to issue, issue encroachment permits for special events on state highway is given in streets. And it states the code and highways code sections 124, 670, 682.5. Special events in, in state right of way may only be conducted for nonprofit organizations by law." I think that's, that's where the, the meat of, of it is about whether an applicant has a right or not. Really, they, if they meet conditions, they do. I'll let that stand as it is. Those are my comments at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody else?
Scott, sorry. Beth, go ahead. I'll follow up.
Thank you. Thank you. So while I agree with Scott that the highways, the roadways are a significant issue, I, I also believe that we have some remarkable habitat and nature that we need to be paying attention to in this situation. For example, if there was an event with kayakers for going down the estero, and it just comes right to mind, if it's 30 kayakers versus two, that creates all sorts of issues. And as a group, not just that they all happen to show up that day. I think we need to really think about the impact on our, our remarkable environment. I also great concern about local notification, as did Scott. I think it should be go straight to the local authorities, and I think it should be no less than 90 days to vet whatever these events are to make sure there's not going to be a negative impact, to see a, a plan as to how everything's going to be coordinated. On, I, as C mentioned, I also have great concerns at the conflict between ministerial and discretionary. I, I believe that this permit is a special type of permit because of our coastal commission. And we can't treat these kind of permits on the coast the same we would anywhere else in Sonoma County. And I think that absolutely needs to be addressed. I think we need to define every possible detail in this. What constitutes an event? This is another example that just comes straight to mind. Years ago, as a very active cyclist, and I belonged to a couple of different bike clubs. And one of the ways the bike clubs would get around filing permits for practice rides would be to space the groups of riders going out as they do their practices, and they don't have any support vehicles in the back. They, they don't have your traditional snack stations. You might see a couple of VW vans pulled over on sides of the roads to help people out, but that would be it. So what constitutes an event? How is this going? How would this apply to some of our parks and our conservation easements? That, that might get sticky with some of, say, the, the events that they want to have. So how do we, we have to iron this out, and we can't leave a rock unturned. We need to know every possible detail. So there isn't conflict. We need to make sure that we all come together as a community, look at this the proper way, and make sure there's no conflict about it going forward.
Thank you, Beth. Mike?
You're welcome.
Thanks, Beth. You, you know, you brought up some very good points. The coast is different because you are under the auspices of the Coastal Commission, and that, that is an entirely different picture than what we face generally speaking inland on the, on the river area, where it's more either county. The county has the responsibility rather than the state oversight. Lead time notification is extremely important. Scott brought it up, and you also brought it up. There have been recent instances where applicants have applied as many as 120 days in advance of an event, and we don't receive notification from Permit Sonoma. Basically, we received notification about a week before the event happened, so that the memo says, can you, if, if there's a problem, let us know. And I'm going, well, this is the bar doors open and the cattle are out, you know, but at this stage of the game. So it's vitally important that we receive the information on a timely basis. Let's see. That the other thing, Scott, that you mentioned, and I wasn't sure that I understood what you're talking about regarding Caltrans was only for nonprofits. I know that we have filming permits available for, for car commercials at Myers Grade and so forth on Highway One. So those are not, not for, those are not nonprofits. Those are for-profit organizations. Did I misunderstand what you were saying?
You're correct. They, I'm reading from this, and it says special events in state, must, special events are different than filming events, I believe.
Thank you. That concludes my comments at this point. Thank you.
Brian, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, my concern is making sure that, one, with respect to what others have said before, isn't that we that, that as a MAC, as the Land Use Committee, that we're making sure we're getting all these event permits so that we can vet them through our own purposes. But from a county perspective, I know Scott talked a lot about Caltrans, which I think Caltrans should be doing more, especially with the roads like Highway One where there's, you're trapping people. But what the county could be doing is maybe looking into where we have roads where there are people, which is the only way in and out, that we have a special checkbox that, that was, those folks who are going to be trapped will get some sort of greater notification. So it may be introduced some requirement for notification directly to those communities. And then, you know, whether that's a checkbox and then having to do that extra paperwork or, you know, some other process, you know. I, I think the MAC can be helpful in that, but I think the people who want to get a, a permit on Highway One where there's no way in and out besides that, and they're shutting down for four or five hours, they should be directly contacting those folks. And then, you know, there's a few other sort of limiting forms that we could introduce that would help get these things to be more noticed by the local communities. Based upon, you know, we can think of, we can go through that and think about what other, you know, what, if there's certain limitations on the road or anything like that, but there are some other boxes that we should be introducing to the forms.
Thank you. Um, any other council? I, I have a couple of things to say, but anybody else want to expand on?
I could expand on what Brian's saying. There is a requirement for submitting maps and possible detours in county roads that that possibility is presented when you have just Highway One or just 116. It's, it's different issue. And, and Caltrans does address all those things, but by reading the section I was have, that I read, I wanted to point out that, that it's Caltrans responsibility to, to address those issues. It's, it's, it's not an automatic deal. The event applicant needs to they just, the encroachment is an issue. Go ahead, Mike.
You brought up a good point about Caltrans, and you have to remember that, you know, the, the, the rules, the statutes that you're reading are a state a promulgation of, of what's, what they're supposed to be doing. There are 14 different highway districts within the state of California, and each district is run as a fiefdom practically. They are completely different from one area to the next. A good example is in Mendocino County. They're in the Eureka Division. Well, we're in the San Francisco Bay Area Division, and they, they, they operate completely differently. I think that, that the group up in Eureka has been more friendly to the folks of Mendocino County as far as events and so forth and working with them than the San Francisco Division has been for our areas. We're the, the, the stepsister, if you will, when you look at the big giants of San Francisco, Contra Costa, Alameda, Moran, and so forth. And we're, we're the guys that they kind of forget about at times.
All right. Thank you. So I'm, I'm going to register in a couple comments as well from Monterreyo and Villagrand area for which I represent. We recently, thank you, Michael, for notifying me, had an event, a filming event for the movie The Cow. And it blocked off Bohemian Highway, and I, thanks to Mike, was able to get notification out to a lot of people. And of course, I still had those that were upset that I didn't notify them, but I, I did try my best to get the word out. Um, and they were blocking off, at first, we thought they were going to be blocking off the road all day, and a community member reached out. She's in the film industry, and she reached out. We found out that they would agree to just rolling like 15-minute stops. And I tried to check in to see how it went, but the, the most important part is what Mike alluded to, which is they had applied for this permit quite a while ago, and I never heard about it. Nobody in the community ever heard about it. The only way I heard about it was Mike has a few connections, and he, he gets the communications. And I've reached out to that individual at the county, but it's, we do need that advanced notification. And I'm hoping that Lynda can bring it forth as a suggestion that at least the MAC reps for their areas all receive information on any and all event permits, and they can see which ones may affect them or their community members. And there needs to be some way for them to communicate more readily out to the communities that are affected that show off in this permit. There was a lot of upset of people not knowing that if they would have known, they would have gone a different direction that day, and they were late to work. And, you know, despite my best efforts, I, I don't know everybody in the community. Um, so, you know, there was a lot of upset over that, and in particular, because Moscow Road is closed, which is one of our evacuation routes. And because there's been three, now four homeless encampment fires in the area, which has scared everybody. The shutting down of yet another evacuation route leaving basically only one, um, maybe two, depending on where you are on the road, um, really scared people. And so I got a lot of comments from our community over this, this filming project. So I can't say strong enough and agree with all of you who mentioned it, advanced notification and communication. And we really need to have the ability to have our communities have some input into this. Because what I might not think about as a council, as a MAC rep, there are other people that have great ideas about, oh, what about this? What about the school buses? Are we going to, you know, allow a timeframe where they can't stop it for school bus? Is there, you know, is there a local bus that goes through picking up people? And will that then, you know, so there's a lot of things that came up in this particular event that actually raised my awareness from mostly all community input. So, and I will probably register in my comments through Permit Sonoma's suggestions on their event form, and I, I ask all of you to do the same. I think it's a good idea that we give them as much input as we can.
You know, a lot of the bus routes and that thing are addressed in the applications. They, they do try to address a lot of this, and, and I think our, our, what we're doing here is designing it so that we, we do here early, and we do vet, and we do get the word out. That's kind of be, will be a part of our job, I think.
Right. And I think it's interesting that when we contacted the filming company, they said, oh, okay, well, just let us know when the school buses are coming through, and well, so it wasn't in their awareness.
Yeah.
So. Any other comments?
Yeah, one of the things, Parra, is that
Now, you're, you're muted, Mike.
Sorry about that. In some very rare instances, a, a form will come through with 15, or not 50, I'm exaggerating, maybe eight events on a, on a particular form. I'm talking and addressing specifically bike events, cycling events. And we weren't even aware of the events until I was mailed a copy of the application form and three of the events had already taken place. And that created quite, quite a concern here in Casodaro because folks were troubled by the fact that an event was going on and no one knew about it. And it was, they thought it was unsanctioned. It turned out it was a sanctioned event by the county, but we were not advised. So again, we, it gets right back down to communication. And I, I think if they do a better job of communicating, we can better inform our communities. And with regard to the forms, I, rather than having each of us submit our suggestions to Permit Sonoma, I think we should probably run it through you, Kyra, and then have one master form go forward that everyone approves. Does that sound workable?
Yeah, that's absolutely reasonable and workable, and I welcome that. I'd be happy to do that.
Good deal. Thank you. Good deal. Thank you.
Beth, did you have another comment?
I do. Kira, you brought up a really important topic, and that is safe evacuation. And I think that there are times of years, the time of the year, we shouldn't have any events. Uh, or, or events that are so small that they are not going to be of significant impact. I can't recall what time of year it was that the, that the previous uh, board of supervisors, his name was Ephron, I think, he tried to sneak through a major cycling event. I don't recall what time of year that was. But it's, but one of that was one of the issues some of the community members had and with this. So it's just something to, to think, to think about and make sure we add into this.
Sorry. Thank you. I just realized I was muted. Um, so I want to go to C because I know she had some comments as well. I just want to say one other thing in relationship to what happened out in Monterrey. Um, one of the suggestions is making sure that when you're closing a road for filming or an event, that they do the same thing they do in the summers where they have the big signs, digital signs that say road closed up ahead because several people got stuck behind the road closure. And they said, well, if I would have known a mile ago, I could have gone a different route and not been late for work. So that was just another comment I got. All right, um, I'd like to open this up. See, did you want to give us your comments?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, first, I really want to support all of the different council members' suggestion on notification. Um, I think that that would be very key. So we don't have things slipping by or slipping by, you know, at the very last moment. So thank you for that suggestion. But I think there's a premise here that is being missed. Um, Scott, you know, you talked about impacts to the public or public access. And Beth, you talked about impacts to coastal resources. We actually have legislation that governs the coast called the Coastal Act and a local coastal plan specific to the coast that determines that anything that impacts public resources or coastal resources and public access is considered development. And what would be required if you wanted to have an event that would do either was that you would need a coastal development permit in order to have that event. And that has a very specific process and review. So the county's position, which they took for Mr. Creo's bike race, was that it was ministerial. It is not ministerial on the coast. Therefore, combining these two committees, when you have different governing laws is, is somewhat worrisome, although there are commonalities, for example, notification, times of year, things like that. But I think you need to be really careful here because we don't want to undo what the Coastal Act and the local coastal program already guarantees and already protects. For example, even if something were to be a principally permitted use in a particular type of land use zone, some type of event, even within those, there are nuances around notification, around hearing, around possibility of appeal. And these are all clearly laid out in the ordinances of our local coastal program. So while being well intentioned, what you'd want to be sure of is that you aren't actually not going to make suggestions, especially as we're going through our local coastal program revision, that we don't change any of those principally permitted uses that have protected our coast for so long. And we don't change any of the existing provisions that make an event like this discretionary on the coast rather than ministerial. So my suggestion is that you do not combine on that level. And also that you reach out to people, to land use folks here, coastal act folks here, people who have a firm knowledge of the local coastal program. As you're formulating any of these maybe general recommendations on notification or times of year. But you need to be very careful that you're not going to suggest something that's actually going to weaken the protections we already have. Well intentioned as you are. And, and, and so I'm very concerned about the joining of these two groups acting as if they are governed under the same law when they're not. And I'm also very concerned about statements that events are ministerial on the coast. And that being shared with the public, when that is blatantly false. So those are my, my comments.
Scott, go ahead.
Okay, I want to clarify, we haven't joined these, these committees. We're just meeting together because we're trying to sort through the administration of what we do. And so we're, we're wanting not to be so different. We want to have a, but, but we are going to go forward separately. We're only here to discuss a, a common interest of how this process is developed or built.
Correct. Any other comments?
Is there anyone else in the public?
Any other public out there that would like to comment?
Norma J has her hand raised. I'm gonna recognize Norma and then Eric after Norma. So let me pull Norm up.
Right. Thank, thank you very much for recognizing me. I would like to reiterate strongly one of the items that was pointed out by C. And it, it very much concerned me when I saw the agenda item that said event permits are ministerial in nature. And that's, that's patently false with respect to the coast. And we, many, many people at the coast proved that unequivocally when we encountered the attempt to make the race proposed on the coast happen under a ministerial permit. And we, we will not stand for any to jam special, special events through as material events through ministerial. I'm sorry, through ministerial permit permitting. We just, we can't have that. That undermines the entire California Coastal Act and coastal plan protections. And it's just, it's just patently not a good idea. Ministerial permits can be automatically granted and approved once you designate an event as a ministerial event as, as covered by a ministerial permit. So really, I, I just, I really suggest, and then that's one of the problems of meant the comment was, well, we'll just send in our group comments. Well, you know, I suggest that you've got two very different perspectives being represented on your joint committee. And that what is relevant to much, to a much degree, to a large degree to the inland is not necessarily relevant at the coast. Although there are many, as has been pointed out by everyone who's spoken so far on the, on this committee, there are many things in common that you're concerned about, that everyone would be concerned about. But that there are very specific concerns with respect to the coast that have to be pointed out and adhered to ongoingly.
Okay, I, I'm, was there anything other than that that you had to say? I, Norma, I thank you. I think I heard both C and Norma, both of you. It's, I think it really is critical that we look at the difference between the coast and make sure that we're not interfering with the coastal plan and protections. Absolutely. And just, I just want to be clear that the only reason why the Lower Russian River Land Use Committee and the Coastal MAC is meeting today on this agenda is we just wanted to, before the 31st, get our interests and our ideas out. And we can separate them, even though we may group them together, we can separate it from Lower Russian River to Coastal MAC so that we're not combining the two. Thank you for that point. Any other comments from the public?
Oh, Eric's up. I'm very glad he's here.
Thank you. Am I?
Yeah, we'll hear you.
Thank you.
Eric, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity. And I think it's good that the two MACs are meeting because I can, sitting here listening and making notes, I can imagine a variety of situations where an event that's on the coast, in the coastal MAC coastal zone domain would have huge potential impacts on Highway 116 getting to the coast. So the, the level of protection that the Coastal Act requires within the coastal zone is obviously a minimum level of protection and doesn't prevent the county from being more ambitious in any category, so long as it doesn't conflict with the state law requirements. To that, I would add that as the Lower River MAC looks at this issue and you differentiate the two areas, the coastal MAC or, you know, and, and actually not all the coastal MAC is in the coastal zone, however, most of it is. But if you look at that, there may be aspects of what's required under the state law in the coastal zone that would appeal to you in the lower river portion. And the county would not be permitted from stepping up its act relative to event regulation in the lower river area where appropriate to match it to the level of protections that are found in the coastal zone. So you might want to actually look into that a little bit and see if there's anything there. And, and my notes are random because I made them off comments that you all made in it. And so I'll, I'll run through them pretty quickly. I would also encourage you both in, there was a lot of talk just now about the coastal zone and whether or not ministerial, et cetera, versus discretionary. If, if either or both of the MACs have opinions on whether or not the current arrangement about the reach of ministerial permits is okay or potentially too great. And you want to pull that back a little bit and push moreover into the discretionary realm. I would encourage you to weigh in on that issue because I would say that, you know, having followed the origins of both MACs and the intention of Linda and the board when, when they were created, that kind of in, input I think is really important. I don't, I would, I'm not saying you've already decided to accept the standard current state of affairs. But if there's any reluctance or timidity about weighing in on the issue of discretionary versus ministerial, I would encourage you to, to be bold, if you will. The 10 day appeal period is always interesting because, you know, to make an appeal, you have to, you have to, you have to pay a fee. I don't know offhand what the fee is to appeal an event permit. But oftentimes, the fee associated with an appeal can be, it can have a chilling effect on the ability of an individual or the neighborhood to actually file an appeal. You might look at that and you might want, you might consider, once the number is known or the amount, whether or not there are any circumstances under which you think it's fair and in the community interest that an appeal could be filed and the permit fee could be waived or reduced. Because, you know, in, in a way, when I look at this and look at the whole issue of events, most of these events aren't put on for the benefit of the people that live in the area where they're had. So to me, you know, the, the, the merit of any event has to be weighed against that it's intrusive and has impacts. And, you know, I'm inclined to always to side more with the people that live here than the people that visit here, you know, just as a kind of a rough rule. I wondered too about what happens if you have multiple events that are, or applications for events that are unrelated? Is it time of application filing that takes precedent? How does that get worked out? And there's a potential for, you know, if you're looking at them in isolation, I don't mean you the MACs, but if the county or Caltrans is looking at each application in isolation and you miss the potential that you could have very, very significant impacts of conflicting events, the cumulative impacts, I think that's an important issue. Some of you have touched on events and fire safety. There's a question, I think, of limiting size, seasonality, which I think Beth brought up earlier. And also the possibility that irrespective of an approval, if there's a red flag warning, an event could be canceled. But I do think it's worth looking at, especially in our recent several years of experience. If this is the new normal, the idea of prohibiting events during fire season, I think should be seriously looked at. The Caltrans office that I think we would deal with is in Oakland. And I only say that to point out that responsiveness or awareness and sensitivity to the nuanced interests of the communities affected, probably we wouldn't have a high level of expectation for Caltrans. And this, I don't mean this in a pejorative or personally critical way. But, you know, they're not here, they don't understand the thing as well. No, I only had two more points and thank you for your patience. I think you, the MACs should receive notification on the day that the application is received by permit Sonoma. End of discussion, period, full stop, whatever. I mean, it just, it defeats the purpose of the MAC if you're not in the mix from day one, period. And then finally, I would just kind of to revisit it, I, I would really look at two things. I, you know, the ministerial versus discretionary, what are the criterion thresholds for those, you know, for, for one versus the other? You know, and you could see where some much smaller event, maybe a total hundred people or something like that. I think about like the, the, the parade in Bodega, which, you know, for it to last 30 minutes, it has to go around the block two or three times. And people move through during the time. But the other thing I would say, and I know you all know this, you could have an event that Caltrans would approve on Highway one that would, I think, let me just say it this way, any event of any size that would have approval on Highway one is going to have impacts on county roads. Now, I don't know because I didn't look at this stuff until just a little bit before the meeting. I would think anytime there's an application for a Highway one permit from Caltrans, there would also have to be an application to the county for secondary roads that are impacted by the disruption traffic flow on the state highway. And that would apply also to Highway 116. And that's it. Thank you so much for, for the opportunity to, to talk. And let me just add this little invitation since I'm now in the planning agency. I, and I want to, I, I, I would like to try COVID circumstances obviously involved, but, you know, I really want to be able to have a good flow of information from the MACs and the individuals on the MACs. So please don't hesitate to call me if there's anything on the agenda or anything that you want to talk about long term. Thank you so much for the generous time.
Thank you, Eric.
Since I'm the host, since I'm the host account, there's no, I don't have the ability to pull a little hand up. As we were going through Eric's wonderful overview, thank you so much for that information, Eric. It was really helpful. I had answers or thoughts, input on, on some of them, and let's see if I can remember most of them. I had a meeting with permit Sonoma and they, about this a couple of weeks ago, and they did explain that because the non-LCP permits are ministerial in nature, they approve them and it's in order, you know, they don't wait to see if another one comes in. So you may get, you may get a permit approved for a bike race on Saturday and then another one approved for Sunday morning, and then another one approved for Sunday afternoon. As long as they're not at the same time on the same road, they can do that. And that's one of the reasons why Leo and the permit Sonoma gentleman with whom we're speaking said, maybe we want to have some sort of recommendation that no road can be closed more than four hours in a three day period so that, because they will not change So that, because they will not change that system of rolling acceptances. But if we create some sort of a framework that says we can only have roads closed for a certain period of time or, or a certain amount of effect, that's a way to get around that problem. Gosh, I got into that one. I'm seeing, I know I have like three or four other things to tell you, Eric. Well, I'll see if it comes back to me.
Scott?
Thank you. Yeah, I, this is sort of directed at Eric. And to see if I've got this right, we have the ministerial approach. And then there's discussion of whether we want to make it more discretionary, theoretic, believing that we'll be able to impact it as a community. And then it's kind of a third way, and that's just tossing it into the coastal development permit direction. And so my question is, in practical terms, how does throwing it to coastal development permit process flow? It's still through the county. Is it just changing the, the list of, the checkoff list? Or how would that practically happen? If Eric's would like to comment, if he has a.
I, I can't tell. Oh, there we go. The, if I understand your question correctly, Scott, the question whether or not a coastal permit would be required. That's good. That's, that's a pretty effective bark there. The question whether a coastal permit is required is just a question of state statutory construct, so not optional. The county doesn't decide what requires a coastal permit. The county processes the coastal permits that are required by state law. The, I, I think, you know, there's, if we just assume that, that the area that's in the coastal zone is going to conform with the requirements of the Coastal Act relative to applications and review and all that. You can either have two, well, I would, I would be drawn toward a division between ministerial and discretionary that might be applicable in both areas, coastal zone and out of the coastal zone. And even in that portion of the coastal MAC that's not in the coastal zone, town of Bodega area. Because really, I think, you know, if it's a small event, the idea of ministerial versus discretionary is all about public review and public process and public input. You know, it's, if you're an applicant, it's more tedious and it takes longer. But, you know, for those of us that feel like the, the whole process should be duty-bound to hear from neighborhoods to get that fine-tuned impact or input that comes from people that live there. So, you know, that's why I, just if you look to impacts, which impacts are all, most often closely connected to, to the size of event. You know, you may have, you may have ideas about, you know, what, what are, there's the current circumstance. And then there's the question of if you're, you know, if you were setting up a brand-new program right now, what might you define as the cutoff level for ministerial versus discretionary, which would require a higher, higher level of notification and public review and public input and a public hearing? Generally speaking, the cutoff is that something that's ministerial is, is so inconsequential that it's not going to stir up any significant community or environmental impacts. As the numbers and size or length of time, you know, increases and that changes. And I would say too, just on the issue of ministerial versus discretionary, you might have a threshold for ministerial. But if you do get, you know, five ministerial permit applications that are all, you know, recognizably small, but they happen on the same Saturday and Sunday weekend. You know, there's no mechanism if there, if, you know, unless you create a mechanism that says multiple low-level impact events clustered into a certain period of time becomes a cumulative impact that we want to have discretionary review of.
Sorry, Elise.
And to, and to your point and the other points around, around the direction, the, the people that have been making this, these decisions are far away. Sometimes, as you pointed out, Erica, Caltrans is in Oakland. The permit person that we were speaking with in Santa Rosa has recently moved up from San Francisco. And he made the observation, oh, every year there's the Folsom Street Fair in San Francisco. And I just knew that on that weekend, I couldn't get across the road to Costco and so I would go to a different store. And I said, you don't grasp the fact that in these rural communities, there is no alternate store, there is no alternate road. But he was very condescending about that, you know, that, oh, residences just need to get used to the fact that once a year this thing happens and you take an alternate route. And as, as you've all pointed out, we're in our fire season. And when it impacts people's ability to get to work, it's, it's another thing. So one of the points that we may want to make is simply educating, you know, educating the permit people and educating that you have to include some local voice somewhere in the process because otherwise these nuances of, of how these things affect our community get completely lost. Somebody who lives in a big city does not really grasp the impact. Another point that Scott has brought up a number of times, and I don't think I've heard it today, but it could have been covered up by my darn dog barking, has been, is there a way to take notice of whether an event follows the guidelines that they promised in the permit so that when they come back the following year? Now, I'm not quite sure, Eric, you would be able to advise on the legality of this. I mean, how would we be able to? You know, there is no enforcement, but would we be able to have a review after an event if there are issues and report those to Permit Sonoma so that when they come back the following year for a permit, that information that they left trash or that they needed to have another porta potty or that there was, were signs left on the road that these things were not attended to? So I think that that's, that's something important to include as well. And I see she has her hand up again. Is it good to go to see now?
Yeah. Go ahead, See. Thank you. And I, I just wanted to clarify and follow up on something Eric said and maybe help answer Scott's question about a coastal development permit. Because that review and that process itself requires notice and hearings, opportunity for public comment. So, so that's when you're talking discretionary, that's when you would truly look at the impacts to coastal resources and public access and then propose mitigations or possibly say that this cannot occur, this event cannot occur. So an applicant is always going to try to say, oh, this is ministerial. I mean, that's what the, the big race, you know, Efron said, oh, it's just ministerial permits. And that was the county stance at that time. And we were able to say, no, this will impact public resources or coastal resources, public access. You're going to need a CDP. And needing a CDP doesn't necessarily stop an event, but it's enough to put the applicant on hold, knowing that they would have to go through that whole review process. So that is what's guaranteed through a discretionary coastal development permit on the coast. And I agree with Eric in saying, how can you ensure more protections governed under the general plan for your ministerial permits for events? Because it is very true that many of these events, especially the larger ones that occur inland, impact the coast and ones on the coast would impact inland. So just, just wanting to clarify what exactly happens when you have a coastal development permit review.
That's her hand.
We'll go to Brian, and then there is a question that's coming from Vesta under the question. So Brian, go ahead.
So yeah, just real quick, in terms of how the, the coastal commission process works, is there something that sort of as an automatic threshold that triggers when that needs to go through a public hearings process? Or, you know, if there's like a series of, if it's 15 bikers, is that small enough that that doesn't impact it? But if it's 150 that it does, is there some sort of threshold or? Is anybody know?
Um, it, it has to do with impact to public access and coastal resources. So each event is analyzed and it's the responsibility of the county receiving the application in the coastal zone to say you need to apply to the coastal commission for coastal development permit. But often it's the public finding out about the event and insisting that the county insist upon the fact that they need a coastal development permit, which was the case with Mr. Creo's marathon. So I agree and completely with Eric that the moment that that application is received by Permit Sonoma, that MAC members are notified so that we can start evaluating what exactly, you know, what was the county's decision on whether this was ministerial or discretionary or needed a CDP? Because sometimes you need that public voice, that local voice to say, hey, we want more review of this particular proposal.
Right. Thank you. I want to read Vesta, her question. If fire and flood seasons are part of the formula for when an event occurs, occurs or is blocked, how is that season defined? Um, I don't know if it is defined at this point. I think we're kind of trying to make the point that maybe we should say, if it's during fire season, it generally, I would say September, October, November, but it's starting earlier each year. So I don't know. It's a good question. What does everybody think?
Yeah, CAL FIRE defines fire season and they define fire season this year in May, late April, first of May, start. And last year, fire season extended until December 10th, I believe. So that basically is the definition of fire season in Sonoma County.
Well, perhaps we could make it something a little bit less broad, such as during any PSPS events, during any red flag events. Maybe we could talk with the emergency services and fire people. Scott, and, and Mike, maybe you could go back to your fire people and say, you know, when would this be particularly dangerous? Because it doesn't seem fair to just take eight months out of the year, six months out of the year, but to have, have defined times that are particularly dangerous. You know, the high wind events, the dry lightning events, maybe we could, maybe we could come up with a list that would be helpful.
The challenge there, Elise, is the fact that many times an event would be scheduled, say, two, three, four weeks out. And we have a two-day notification that we've got a, a dry lightning or that we've got a red flag and it would have to be then canceled. So we need to, we need to take a look at it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think that's a worthy point of examining at that late date, if there is a public safety power shut-off. Probably shouldn't be having major events there.
Absolutely correct, Brian, for sure.
All right. Do we have any other public and/or committee comments?
Just really quick, Eric, how do we get ahold of you? I don't know that Eric was able to hear me.
There we go. I could, I could hear you. I just have to wait, I just have to wait to have my mic turned on. I'll give you my phone number and my email. Well, actually, my email, I have a county email, which is eric.koenigchauffeur, common spelling, a cheap laugh line.
I'll look it up. It's on the email about that you got just before this started.
Yeah. And also my phone number is 874-2389. And I welcome your calls. And I, I wanted to, just to, something that Elise just pointed to. And this is, this is just general and we all ought to be concerned about this. And again, this is just an objective observational point. The example that Elise offered about the recent employment of somebody from San Francisco. You know, it's like the flip side of, you're not in Kansas anymore. You know, you're not in, you know, you are in Kansas, you're not in Manhattan anymore. I mean, the, the turnover at Permit Sonoma has been so profound over the last four or five years that it's almost entirely brand-new staff. Some of the staff is contract staff. So, you know, there really is a need, and I actually met with Tennyson Scott or last week, and one of the major points of our discussion that I've actually been talking to Tennyson about for the last few years is that, you know, we really do need to have a curriculum to intentionally introduce and, and tune people up on these communities. And, and one of the little things I mentioned at a hearing recently, there was a hearing at, at the Landmarks Commission, it was, you know, about a house in Bodega Bay. But it was actually in Salmon Creek. And I pointed out to the staff that I get what you did. The mailing address is Bodega Bay. That's US Postal Service organizational convenience. It has absolutely nothing to do with the communities on the coast. And if you're going to publish the mailing address, you at least parenthetically have to say Salmon Creek or Carmet or Serena Del Mar. And, you know, the same applies in the north part of the coast where everything's Jenner, all the way up to Sea Ranch or so. The other thing is, I just pushed back a little bit on something Elise said. You know, having to do with the scope of the fire risk prohibition period. I mean, I think it's really apparent that if there's a red flag warning or a shut-off or any of that, you know, that's like the light turned red. Yes, of course you're going to stop. I would really seriously ponder the question of, what do you want to do in terms of, when the yellow light comes on? And I, you know, fairness for the, for, for the promoters of an event versus safety of the people that live here, I know where I come down on that. Thank you again for the time.
Scott, you have your hand up. We also have a hand up from Rue in the public. Rue, why don't you go ahead?
Oh.
Go ahead.
I was saying, I'll just talk until somebody nods and says they can hear me.
I can hear you.
Nodding now, good. I'm sorry I was late to this because I have to work for a living. But it's really, I'm really, really glad that you're taking a look at this. And it's clear from what I've seen so far that you're taking it seriously. The, the issues along the coast and the Russian River, having lived in both areas, are really different. And the southern coast and the northern coast of Sonoma County are really different. So the impacts need, I think, to be analyzed site specifically. Anything that happens needs to be addressed site specifically. And somebody asked a question about the Coastal Commission and what the trigger is. The trigger is basically defined by the Coastal Commission and the new local coastal plan draft, granting, this is not in stone yet, actually allows for certain kinds of projects to be automatically, they have, they would avoid having to go to the Coastal Commission. And that's of concern to me because of the complexity of our coast. We don't live in a homogenized area where everything is the same. So in terms of public process, which also came up a little while ago, the, the, the planning department has the capacity to notify jurisdictions and agencies that are responders. That is to say, anybody who is supposed to weigh in on a permit externally gets a notification that then they were, they respond to. Mostly they don't respond, which is sort of horrifying, but that's the reality. They're all overworked and overwhelmed and understaffed as well. So mostly those agencies and jurisdictions don't respond to a notification. It is possible to ask for those notifications to be sent. It is possible to ask for those notifications to be sent to organizations beyond the agencies and jurisdictions so that that notification becomes more of a public awareness that people can take a look and say, well, this is problematic, and let me tell you why. And, and so the public then has the capacity to weigh in before the applicant has gone too far and spent a whole pile of money. And, and that could save them a lot of trouble and could save the county a whole lot of trouble. And even if it goes ahead, would at least identify the problems in advance? Because there are probably some locations where there just aren't a lot of circumstances where a big event would be appropriate. There are traffic impacts and water availability issues and, you know, fire things that, that are more critical in the wooie than in other areas. So, so there's lots and lots of tools in the kit bag that we can, as citizens, ask to be included in any project application, including public notification. You just have to ask to get that. And as the representatives of the MAC, you can certainly be put on that notification list.
Thank you, Rue. Um, Scott, we'll go back to you and then Beth.
Yeah, um, what, what I sort of see forming possibly is, uh, you know, our, our impulse is to, when we saw ministerial was the process, is to say, well, what's our role? What's the public's role? And so we want discretion. But we want to recognize that small events, maybe, maybe ministerial works. And so that the, um, the coastal development, the local coastal plan can define where that, um, transition from ministerial to discretion is, perhaps. And since it's in a draft form, maybe it can be tightened up to, um, actually guide us from ministerial to discretion. That's it.
Okay, Beth?
My hand, I think, didn't get lowered after my, uh, last question to Eric. I'm good.
Eric, I saw that your hand was still up in the, in the participant list. Did you still, was that?
Well, I took it down because, yeah, I, I, I don't need to add anymore. I think we've covered it all. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Eric.
The only hand I see up at this point is C. C, is that a new hand or an old hand?
There's Liz.
I see Liz now. Liz, do you want to go ahead?
Unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay. Okay. Um, the only, this is, probably seems insignificant to people, but, um, it has to do with the, mainly with the car commercials, is something that I found, if you're watching a Mercedes commercial, and how disturbing it was to see this car, these four cars going through a little neighborhood with a little girl on the sidewalk doing chalk. And as they rode through, the, uh, the ground was shaking and her little, you know, things. So I know that there have been several hundred commercials that have been filmed out here. And in recent years, it seems like we've had a lot more accidents. But I watched the way, and if people would watch these commercials, you can see the way people are driving. This is where they are learning to drive. And when they show the coast, they're going up the coast, and they think they can drive like they do in those commercials. It comes out, you know, with us having to deal with all of our helicopters and everybody going through, I believe. Anyway, it's just one little thing I thought about that I, I just am trying to put out to people to be, you know, look at commercials and the way they do those, you know, they have people speeding through the city, like San Francisco. They're doing these crazy little things and they're, you know, and then they have those cars that spin out in those neighborhoods, you know. I forget what they call it. But anyway, I just wanted people to maybe start being aware of things like that. And, you know, it's, that's why when I see these commercials and what, you know, how much of an impact they have when they're putting these events on, especially out in Jenner, because it's so, you know, they love the views and all that. But it, it also, I see, because I ride Jenner to Bodega Bay single day down the coast, and I see the way people drive, and, and I'm not very happy at all with motorcyclists either. It's very disturbing what they do. So anyway, that's one little thing I wanted to put out there as far as the, the TV commercials. I don't think there's really any benefit from my, my point of view of, of what's, you know, they don't, they don't give me any money for this, so, or anybody else that I know of. So anyway, that's one little snippet, because everybody else is, you know, covered everything so grandly. But that's one little thing. I'm just trying to put a little fish out there to people, so that would be it.
Most definitely, Liz. Thank you for your comments. So I don't see any other hands up at the moment from anybody. Um, we've had some great discussion. Um, and I, I thank you all for your attendance to this meeting. If there's, are there any other last comments before we wrap it up? I, I encourage people to reach out to me. And I will try to bring, um, separately from the lower Russian River and Coastal MAC, our concerns and suggestions. And I invite all of you out there, um, of the public, to share your comments with Permit Sonoma and your ideas regarding special permits. Anything else, anybody?
Move to adjourn the meeting.
I have a second.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right?
Thank you of the public for showing up.
Everybody, great meeting.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, 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 thank you.